And me for the.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of this country, one nation under the universal liberty and justice.
Thank you. May we have roll call, please?
Yes, Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney.
Here.
Councilmember Udi.
You're muted.
She muted me here.
Vice Mayor Talts.
Yep.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. The agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each meeting at the following locations. City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, the Stoneman Building, and the Stoneman Building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the meeting agenda. Please note that all comments are limited to two minutes and will be timed by city staff. I would now like to ask City Clerk Baker to explain how public comment will work.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there'll be time for public comment. We'll accept comments in three ways. First, we will take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it to me if you wish to speak on an item. There's a countdown timer that will be displayed up on the projector screen to help the public keep track of the remaining time to speak. Excuse me, we will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on participants, and then clicking on raised hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please not use this feature until we have asked for public comment, or else you may not see it or know which item you're asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you would like to speak on this particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Finally, I will then read into the record any public comments received by email for that particular item. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting emailed public comment, the city has instituted a 3:00 PM cutoff the day before Friday city council meetings for emailed public comment. This is to ensure there's sufficient time to gather and present the emailed comments at the city council meeting. Any comments received after 3:00 PM the day before a Friday city council meeting will be included in the public comment record but will not be read at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have no one present who would qualify for public comment. Do we have any requests submitted electronically?
Let me give just a moment to see if any raised hands come through. There are no requests for comment.
Thank you. Do I have a motion and a second to waive further readings?
So moved.
Thank you. Second, anyone?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney.
Yes.
Councilmember Udi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talts.
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we move on to new business. Item number one, may we have a presentation, please, from city manager Marlo?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. Good morning. I am delighted to present the staff report this morning. This concerns our employee benefits and compensation. It's typically referred to as the meet and confer process, and as the council knows, we have generally four employee groups. There are the city employees, the CEA, City Employees Association, the Police Officers Association, the POA, the Firefighters Association, FFA, and the unrepresented employees. And the unrepresented employees include both management and our part-time employees. We have contracts with the three organized groups, and we have a compensation plan for our unrepresented employees. And all of those expired on June 30th of 2022. So the city has been engaged in the meet and confer process with all of the employees for the last several months, and I am delighted to clarify and confirm that we have agreements with everybody in place. And so I will go through just some specifics and some generalizations of what those are. First off, we are intending to do a two-year term, and that would include a seven percent base salary increase of seven percent, sorry, seven percent base salary increase retroactive back to July 1st. In the second year, it would be a four percent increase. The negotiation includes a conversion to fully paid medical insurance and a one-time COVID bonus for all the employees who were here at the time. There are also some other adjustments that are specific to each particular group. Those are all detailed in the attachments to the staff report. If there are any members of the community that are interested in getting a little bit more information, while still avoiding a very lengthy staff report here this morning. We were able to come to agreement with Firefighters Association and CEA very quickly, and so we have those MOUs on the agenda for you today to approve. We also, of course, have a compensation plan established for the unrepresented employees, and those are the three things in front of you today. Subsequent, the Police Officers Association did also agree to the terms, so that MOU will be brought to you at a future meeting. The total cost that we're asking you to appropriate today is $1,315,829. That is part of your motion. All items were negotiated per the city council's explicit direction, but I am happy to answer any questions that you have, and that concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much, and thank you, Dr. Marlo, for all the work you put into this. It's appreciated. Dr. Huang, any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepherd-Romney, any questions?
No.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi, questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Okay, Vice Mayor Tal.
I have no questions. I'd also like to thank the city manager for her effort in taking the rowing oar on all these negotiations, as well as our labor attorney, Steve Varski, who's been a great asset for us.
Thank you for mentioning, Mr. Varski. That's appreciated. I concur, and yes, we just want to thank all of our employees who remain so loyal to the city during the COVID era. We are delighted that we are now in a wonderful clearing, and with that, I'd like to open it up for public comments. Are there any?
Let me give just one moment to see if there's any raised hands. No request for comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. At this time, I'd like to bring this item back to the council for discussion. Is there anyone who has any comments, questions? Councilmember Udi is shaking his head. No. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, comments?
I just wanted to echo your comments that we appreciate our employees, and it was a long process, but I think it went well, and I hope that everyone is satisfied with the contracts. And thank you to city manager Marlo for taking the laboring or the rowing one, too, and as well as our helpful counsel to get a good result.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilmember Huang?
I concur.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I concur, and also to note that this has been very difficult because of the issue of inflation and the cost of living increases, and we wanted to make sure that we were fair yet reasonable as well. So it was very difficult, and we really appreciate everybody's cooperation in this matter.
And thank you. Everything that has been said, I concur with. Therefore, do we have a motion?
I move to adopt a memorandum of understandings for the Firefighters Association and City Employees Association, adopt resolution number twenty-two dash thirty-eight, amending resolution number R twenty dash oh-three, and approving compensation plan for unrepresented employees, and approve additional appropriation in the amount of one point or $1,315,829 in fiscal year 2022, '23, to be spread over the effective full-time personnel budget line items as shown in the respective budgets.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney.
Yes.
Councilmember Udi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talts.
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, moving to item number two, introduction of ordinance number zero oh dash twenty-two dash thirteen ninety-seven regarding design review. May we please have a presentation from City Clerk Baker?
Thank you, Mayor. This was a course correction we did earlier this year at the April 29th council meeting. Council adopted ordinance number O dash twenty-two dash thirteen ninety-seven, making updates to all of our advisory bodies except for the Recreation Commission. And in that process inadvertently, the numbers were not done correctly. That's my mistake, and section three of Article fifteen of Chapter twenty-three was replaced accidentally. So this is just correcting that mistake. You'll see the numbering has been changed to reinsert what was section three is now section four, and all the numbering below that has been updated, so we don't have that same issue. In the staff report, both was provided the original text that was approved in 2018 and the red line to show that it was inserted in the same as what was previously approved. I also took the opportunity to update some outdated references in Article fifteen, so mention of planning and building director or department was changed to community development director or department. I also changed references to just commission, to planning commission, just to make that more obvious which commission we were speaking to, and those were the only changes. And again, this is just a course correction, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions from council? Councilmember Udi, any questions?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, any questions?
Yes, I just went back to see the April 29th and the red line version, because I was trying to just make sure that what was taken out is all completely back in. So I appreciate you bringing this to us and finding it. But I was confused because I went back to April 29th, and I don't see in our red line version from April 29th even the missing part, so I'm trying to figure out.
I only went till it ended just speaking about the Design Review Committee. I didn't take that full article back to you guys on April 29th, and that's why that mistake occurred, because you didn't get the full article. You just got up through where it finished talking about the Design Review Committee.
Okay, so then just.
Because of the numbering, the codifier just mapped right over it.
Okay, so just for future reference, I don't know how, so we can avoid it, because I didn't go back, obviously, when, on April 29th. I don't want this to happen again about something else, right? So I was thinking about how to avoid this in the future, because mistakes happen, and I completely innocently understand. So is there a way to, that we need to think about, because there's no other way to, I mean, there's a way to find it if council members always go into our existing code and look it up and compare it there, but that's the point of a red line version. So I just wanted to see if there was anything else, or you just think this was a one-off?
I think it was a one-off. I certainly learned my lesson, but yes, we can certainly implement, you know, checklists and procedures to make sure that not just one person, but multiple people are verifying the numbering scheme and things of that nature.
That would help, just so there's a second backup. I would appreciate that, because it hasn't risen to a problem yet, but it could be something else that does. You know, and we do modify ordinances quite a bit. It's part of our job. So thank you very much. I appreciate it, and I appreciate you bringing it forward.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Tal?
I have no questions, but thank you very much for catching this and bringing this to our attention as quickly as possible.
Similarly, I have no questions, but I do have an ask, because I didn't realize that you were the presenter, and unfortunately, I was looking at something I would love to see in the future, so just for comment purposes, I had mentioned to Director Figaroa, it would be wonderful if we could also include what the Design Review Committee and the Planning Commission does not cover. So for my colleagues who will be here going forward during the next review, I think that would be really helpful to have in writing, because sometimes we.
And I did have a discussion with Director Figaroa, and you decided, let's just get the correction, and they can look at that full article in total to see what other adjustments and take it through DRC and appropriate channels.
Perfect. Thank you so much. I would like to open this item for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak?
Let me give a moment for any raised hands. No request for comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to bring it back to council. Any discussion from Councilmember Huang?
Oh, no, no, no comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Udi shaking his head. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, any?
No.
Vice Mayor Tal?
No, I do not.
I do not either. Do I have a motion?
I move to waive full reading and introduce for first reading by title only ordinance number O dash twenty-two dash thirteen ninety-seven, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Marino, California, correcting Chapter twenty-three, Article fifteen of the San Marino Municipal Code to add back in the section regarding matters subject to design review.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong.
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney.
Yes.
Councilmember Udi.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talts.
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number three. This is a receive and file, and it is a recap of our July event. May we please have a presentation from Community Services Director Johnson?
Good morning, everybody, Madam Mayor and council members. As we all know, San Marino's Fourth of July celebration is the community's signature special event. It's a beloved and treasured tradition for fifty-seven years. On behalf of the Interdepartmental Event Committee, this presentation will provide a review of the event's operating budget, estimated attendance. Over the past five years, we have a summary of what went well this year and what challenges that we faced. But today, we are seeking critical feedback from council on potential improvements and enhancements going forward. Next steps after that is that staff will be working to develop viable solutions on those recommendations that address operational safety, liability concerns, and will bring those to the Recreation Commission and then to council for final consideration. We anticipate taking this report to the commission after the first of the year. So the first slide here just provides some background on the event. Again, we've been celebrating this event since 1965 for fifty-seven years. It encompasses a community parade, the picnic, and the finale, the fireworks show, all at our crown jewel, Lacy Park. Partners over the years have been the Chamber of Commerce, Rotary Club, and City Club. Prior to 2006, the Chamber of Commerce and Rotary were actually the ones who managed this event. But since 2006, the city has taken the lead, and the Recreation Division has managed the event overall. Of late, the Rotary Club has continued to play a significant role in the community parade, and City Club since 2014 has hosted the VIP Pavilion. This slide represents an attendance snapshot. As you can see, we hover around nine thousand attendees throughout the day. We did skip 2020 because of the worldwide pandemic and the shutdown. We have recovered since 2021. We had a dip in attendance, but this year, we, we believe our estimate to be around eighty-six, ninety-four. How we do that is we do have wristband sales, as well as other wristbands that are given away as comp tickets, sponsor tickets, staff tickets, those kinds of things. So that gives an understanding of the scope and magnitude of this event. This slide represents our budget to actual, so this is our how much money does the city actually spend on providing this event to our community? The, as you can see, we have five years there. We have, again, skipped 2020. We have revenue, then expense line, and a net income or a general fund subsidy. And then lastly, we provide a noted cost recovery to this event. So if we just focus on the final column there, this year, we spent about, or we received and generated about $65,000 in revenue. The cost to put on this event was around $85,000. Now, these costs, it's important to note, do include direct and indirect expenses, hard and soft costs to put on this event. It includes certainly all direct personnel costs for the event, so it costs this year about $85,000. And then finally, the, the general fund support to put on this event was approximately $20,000. The important line, I believe, on this slide is really the cost recovery. And, and the, the final footnote there. The average percent of cost recovery for events with mostly a community benefit nationwide is between twenty and twenty-five percent. This benchmark is provided by the National Park and Recreation Association, as well as Green Play, who is a nationwide consultant who does a lot of analysis on industry-wide standards and things. Here in San Marino, because we do charge to attend this event, we have a really high cost recovery, which is a good thing. We cover the majority of our expenses, so we're, we're at a seventy-five, seventy-six percent cost recovery for this community event, which is, it should be noted. So we get to what, reviewing kind of what, what went well this year. So we rebooted the, the event a little bit sooner this year. We started our planning, and I mentioned earlier, this is truly an interdepartmental team that puts on this event. Every single department is represented, and so we all came together and said, what are some, some improvements we can make this year? So we enhanced public messaging. Prior to the event, we freshened up our signage in a site map directory. We improved the event brochure itself. Again, we started planning a little bit earlier. We got ourselves organized as a team coming off fully from some of the challenges of the, and setbacks related to the pandemic and the shutdown. The community partners did praise city staff for their professionalism and helpfulness. We received that feedback through two meetings that we had, post-meetings, post-event, with City Club as well as Rotary, because we wanted to hear from our partners as to how they felt about what went well. So I thought it was important to note that. The parade and the pavilion operations were very well received by spectators as well as participants. City Club reported that their pavilion tickets were very, in very high demand, and then the Rotary Club shared that they had ample volunteer support, and, which is always a challenge when you put on a community event, and it's kind of, we need a lot of hands on deck to do certainly a parade, and so that was one of their reports from Rotary Club. Now we get to conversely, the challenges that were experienced and that we hope to address and make improvements for next year. High attendance continues to impact neighborhood parking. Number two, there were, security concerns were raised related to current staffing levels and the ability to provide adequate coverage at both entrance points, the side exit gates, as well as throughout the park. Number three, staff observed patrons not adhering to park and event guidelines related to the prohibition of intoxicating beverages and controlled substances. That language comes straight out of the ordinance, city ordinance. Number four, there were concerns that were raised related to the quality of the fencing up at the front by the main stage, as well as the, as the, it got dark, and we needed to kind of get, get everyone safely out of the park, that we could have used some additional visibility and lighting. The city partners reported they, or excuse me, we internally experienced some challenges with our partners getting their permit paperwork submitted on time, and in addition to upholding the permit responsibilities, that was really in their court. City Club reported to us as well that their budget struggles to break even, and then securing volunteers for the pavilion was a difficulty this year for them. Rotary Club shared that there was some lack of signage and barricades that hindered the clearance of the parade route. So those are some things we, we hope to address certainly in our, our planning efforts next year. We took this exact same presentation to our newly convened Recreation Commission on September 12th. Some of the questions that our new commissioners brought forward was the, they ask about Lacy Park's public assemblage occupancy load, or what is the capacity? They had no idea that we hosted nine thousand and headed towards ten thousand on a good year for this event, so they asked what that number was. And we provided that, a staff report was provided by our fire chief a few years back that the current occupancy load is, and I'm not the expert in room on this, I don't want to, if you have any questions on this, that number is thirteen thousand five hundred. And you may recall that from a staff report that Chief Raiter provided a few years ago. They requested an understanding of the ticketing prices, the price of the resident versus non-res differential. We provided that to them, and then they were questioning, and we're curious about the patriotic home decorating contest that a few of them really enjoyed from 2020. But we explained that that was part of the, the year when we didn't do the event, and we tried to continue with some activities that could be done outdoors and still acknowledge the holiday. So those were, you know, worth noting, and maybe we'll bring it back next year if we have the staff capacity. It's a big event, a lot of moving parts. So looking ahead, upon receipt of the feedback from council today, we're work, we will work to provide viable solutions and recommendations that address safety and liability issues. We will be requesting this from Recreation Commission as well as council, and we'll take those into consideration. This report again will be given to the Recreation Commission after the first of the year. With that concludes my staff report, and we will field any questions you may have. I will do my best. If not, I will defer to my colleagues in the room. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for the work put into this and for all that staff did in planning for the fourth. Questions? Councilmember Udi?
I don't have any questions. Kathy and Eddie, thank you for the report to me, just the fact that you went through and did this report in self-reflection. You're, you're thinking about improving it and preparing for the future, so nice to go down. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang?
No, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Thank you very much, Eddie and Kathy, for a wonderful event, as well as, I know that the police and fire play a major role in keeping us all safe. It was lovely this year and seemed like full, full amount, so I don't know. My question had to do with the community you spoke about. One of the concerns might be the community partners or the groups were late in getting their information to you, that kind of delayed and pushed even more toward the end. And so I just wanted to know, is that like the troops and the other community groups that have some role in the parade or in the park itself, like selling, I know Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts used to have, I didn't go there, but you said booths there, what, or who, who are you? What was the problem in that regard?
That process is managed by the city administration city hall, and that permitting process, my colleague, Nicole Quadras, our community engagement manager, I don't know, Nicole, feel me take a stab at it if you'd like to speak directly?
So I believe that feedback is referring to the special event permits that we issue in addition to all the work that our recreation folks are doing. There are two special event permits, well, three really, but the blacksmith run is kind of a well-established, long-running, self-sufficient thing, and it's a little bit separated from all the rest of the activities of the day. So the two permits that we are talking about is the city pavilion hosted by the city club, and then the parade has a separate special event permit since the Rotary kind of completely manages that process with the applicants. And we had several meetings with both of those entities to discuss the permitting process, since we are kind of working through this, a little bit new for them, it's a little bit new for us. And most of it came down to insurance certificates, having to wait on that, as well as some additional information that we had kind of asked for, but again, it being a new process to them. So we've, we've met with them and worked through those, and we anticipate that next year that might not be the case. But it was just more, more the certificate of insurance issues to keep the city, you know, protected from liability in that, that matter, but also to keep the Rotary and the City Club insured as well.
All right. Thank you. That helps a lot, because I just didn't know how specific we were, but I, I appreciate that that does take a lot of time, and certificates of insurance are necessary for everybody involved. So thank you for managing that. Thanks very much. That was my only question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Tal?
How did we figure out how many people were in attendance? Is it just by ticket distribution?
Ticket distribution and counting up any volunteers that we, that, that do participate in the event itself. Oftentimes they will fulfill their volunteer duties. And then they'll attend the event. So we we included those numbers, any comp tickets that were that were issued.
And that's my question. How many comp? Because the way I see it, we're we're spending about ten dollars a head on this. But our cost recovery is about seven fifty ahead. So obviously we're comping tickets. How many comp tickets do we provide?
I'm going to look to Eddie because I do not know that number.
I mean, just generally.
Two or three hundred, maybe two or three hundred, I believe, my memory. Yeah.
We put city staff, any other groups that may require them like the parade volunteers.
Okay.
The kids or the Little League take a large portion of those.
And what do we charge? Do we charge city club to to have their pavilion? No.
I I don't believe so. No.
They do their tickets. We allocate a certain amount of tickets to them.
But not for the use of the the event space itself.
That be you, you, you you took counsel actions away with these related to the city pavilion.
Okay.
For their special event permits that they
They do pay for the ticket. I'm wondering if they're going to buy in bulk. Because do they do they sell the tickets as part of their package? If they're going to buy in bulk, maybe we could offer a discount next year. That's just one thought.
They do. They they get a they get an allocation of tickets and then they sell them as part of their package.
Yeah.
They get them at the resident fee, which is five dollars per ticket. So that's what they're charged.
Okay.
Charge them any higher than.
Okay. And then do we know if the vendors that are there? Whether they're making money or not making money? Do we get a report back on that?
The vendors, they don't tell us how much they sell, but we charge them a hundred dollars each to have a to have their vending booth in the park.
Do we know if it's working out for them?
It does work out for them. Yeah, we have them come back every year and there they they do recover their their costs. They they purchase a city business license as well as a hundred dollars for the fee.
Okay.
Yeah.
And the last question I have in eighteen and nineteen. It it appears our budget is twenty thousand more around there, not a budget, our expenses. What it was, you know, seventeen, we spent eighty, eighteen sixty two, nineteen sixty three, twenty one and twenty two, around eighty two to eighty four thousand. What is that increase in expense?
We're going to get that slide pulled back up here, just so we can all reference those numbers. So could you, the the years in question were eighteen nineteen?
Yeah, we we spent approximately twenty thousand dollars less than we do in than we did in twenty one and twenty two and even seventeen. Is there something more that is that the family fun zone is that?
I liked that those numbers as well. And from the reports, it looks like it was staffing. The amount of staffing was different in those years. There was a lot more staff that were able to work. I know for recreation, we we did start getting a decline of staff members that we couldn't put on, but there was other departments that had more staffing on the other years. So I don't know if they had less staffing capacities in two thousand eighteen and nineteen, but that's where where the
The increase.
The increases are correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So maybe it's really an internal reporting, you know, and capturing that those payroll, those payroll chargebacks to the event as well as the number of staff worked.
Okay. Well, thank you for the report. We haven't had something like this before and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor started with my would have been my first question. So thank you for that explanation. I have a few questions. I'm concerned about the city club and the pavilion. You shared in your narrative that they stated they had a high demand for tickets, yet they're having difficulties in breaking even. Is this something where they may not participate in the future? Could you sort of recap their position after your meetings when you met? Or is this just going to be something that they will be mown going forward?
I I'd like to ask city manager Marlo, if you'd like to weigh in, as she did a wonderful job of facilitating those two meetings with those partners of ours. So.
I think they're going to continue. They love the pavilion. It matters very much to them. I think it is an annual tradition for Bob Houston to be able to raise concerns about how challenging the process was, and we love him dearly. So they they did have demand. They did have some concerns about how to manage the situation, but I can't imagine them ever giving enough.
Okay. And and I did notice they sold out very quickly this year. So there are no real variables they can play with unless they pay less for the food and market up more that they sell to the attendees. So thank you. That's helpful to know. Also, I wanted to comment. I'm delighted that the Recreation Commission is back and up and running. And like many of our work groups within the city, we're finding incredible value in their input, separate from staff, separate from council. Do you see an expanded role for them as they get settled and moving forward in giving input, for example, on their thoughts about certainly not the decision makers, but getting input to you about pricing for tickets, resident, non-resident vendors. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure what the insurance fee is, but a hundred dollars sounds like a bargain because they are selling all day, but there may be factors I don't know about. If it is as it appears, perhaps we could look at adjusting that somewhat. But just as a thought, it it felt like from the questions they asked, they may be eager to just offer input going forward.
Yeah, absolutely. The meeting that we presented this event recap to was their first meeting and there was a lot of information being thrown at them that day. It was sort of like, you know, drinking from a fire hose. If I was a new commissioner, we were giving them an orientation to the department. They received that day their orientation as a new advisory body. They are all new to serving in a public capacity, every single one of them. And so as they become more comfortable with their role, as well as understanding the scope of the services and programs that the Recreation Division provides, I do anticipate in the future them playing a a critical role in advising staff as well as council on everything related to fees. You know, improvements on events. Certainly, we have the San Marino Center coming online and we will be bringing them. I know in the upcoming months and sooner than later, the fee structure for specifically San Marino Center fees, program fees, everything, you know, related to all of our major events. And they're going to be a busy group, I believe. So yes, they will play a critical role.
Thank you. And it sounds like they will feel valued and that's really wonderful. I appreciate that. Is there anyone wishing to take public comment on this item?
Let me give just a moment to see if there's any raised hands from Zoom. They're in a request for comment on this item.
Thank you.
Oh, oh, but you know what? Can I take that back? Mr. John Destin. You can go and unmute.
Yeah, just a quick question. On the vendors, they pay a hundred dollar fee per per location plus a business license. What what is the cost of the business license?
I don't have the staff doesn't have the specific amount for the business license or based on businesses, sectors. So it could be up to, you know, it could be a hundred, it could be two hundred. I could get that information, but I don't have that at the top of my head.
That's okay. It's it varies depending on the type of business. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Dustin. Anyone else?
I see no other raised hands.
Thank you. I'd like to bring it back to council for any final comments, questions, Councilmember Udi. He muted again.
Oh, yes.
Sorry about that.
There we go. One way to shut me up. Thank you. Anyway, Kathy and Eddie, again, thank you for putting the report together. Shows to me that you you care. You're looking back five years at what you did in the budgets and looking forward on how to improve. So that's you know, all part of the good management. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepherd Romy.
I wanted to thank you as well. I thought the retrospective was great. It's good to see that the new rec commission is coming on board and will be exciting. I think they're great people selected. So that will be a hopefully a fruitful effort by you and the group. I appreciate this. It was fun to see a look back and understand a little bit. I always wonder. I think that as to the questions are kind of you know, throwing things out there. I think that your recovery is great. And so I hate to raise prices for any of the groups who are on the tickets unless we are seeing that there's a real crisis there. I do think you probably need more lighting because and that will be a cost because you rented for that event. And I have no idea the cost of that type of thing, but it is dark in some areas and going out or certain entry points probably need better lighting. That would be the only thing that I would recommend seem like. But I think that this is such a successful event for a community, the greater community as well. It's nice to know staff comes and that brings our families as well as there's plenty of people from our surrounding neighborhoods, even outside the city. It's really a highlight. So I hope that it continues and is wonderfully done as this past year. Thank you for working on this.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Huang, any comments, closing thoughts?
Yes, I'll thank you for the report too. And regarding the cost recovery. Eddie would know that I want more than a seventy six percent from the old days, but I can let that go. And I want to thank all the staff, you know, that was involved with this event and and also the staff that has spent that day when we were having fun and they had to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tom.
Thank you. As I expressed before, the one thing that shocks me about this report is that there's alcohol being drunk at the
Yes.
See that. But no, thank you. And thank you for staff for putting this all together.
Thank you. And I echo everything said and a genuine appreciation for staff. That is a long hot day and we greatly appreciate everyone. Thank you. This is a receive and file, so we don't need any additional action. Okay. Moving forward, does anyone have any written communication for or public writings for distribution? Any colleagues wish to share anything? Although seeing none, although it is not a writing, I'd like to share that last Saturday. Sponsored in part through the Council of San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments, I attended the Serenity Homes grand opening in Baldwin Park. It is the first tiny homes for families. And I was delighted that communities are starting to embrace this. At least fourteen of my colleagues from other cities were present and I think we are all feeling the need to mutually support cities as they face people who are unhoused and with the families, it was just incredible to see a garage space with computers and desks where these kids can get caught up in school and where they have washers and dryers. So the goal is to keep them there no longer than six months and they can go on to hopefully permanent housing. Anything else anyone wishes on that item? Public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak at this time? And if so, may we hear what they have to say?
Let me give Zoom folks a moment for any raised hands. Okay, I'm not seeing any raised hands, no requests for comment.
Thank you. Coming back to council, any items that you would like to see on a future agenda? Councilmember Huang.
No, thank you.
Councilmember Udi, no.
Not at this time.
Thank you. Councilwoman Shepherd Romy.
Yes, I I'm interested in getting the housing element back and a report and have that up come up before us hopefully next month so that we can move forward with that and our negotiations with the HCD. So I don't know if we have enough date or as to where things stand with our consultant, because I know it's been with our consultant for many months now.
Yes. The consultant has provided a red line. He's not working on the matrix. He had to put the work on hold because of his contract expiration. But that was, the amendment was approved last council meeting. So we're hoping that in three weeks we can have all that work. He also announced that he will be having some help from a colleague of his, who is well respected in the field. So we hope to get that information to you as soon as possible.
Great. And so I understand he's a solo, if you will, business person in this regard. And so he's been doing this plus many other cities and assignments, I assume. So that has also led to the length of time. Right. I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
And just for for the balance of the council, just a little context, there are approximately one hundred ninety cities in the SCAG region. There's an article in the paper, I think yesterday, the day before, that only forty have completed this process. Yeah, exactly. At this point. There's impacts that are delaying this, both because of limited HCD staff to review all of these. The back and forth takes some time. There's also a limited number of consultants out there who are swamped. And then we are layering on top of all of that, the fact that now the Northern California cities deadlines are coming in. So I I think, you know, we are continuing to make progress to the extent we can. But I think it's going to continue to be a arduous process.
And within that, just someone follow up, if you don't mind me. So in that regard, are any deadlines from HCD? Have they talked about extending any deadlines or has there been any discussion? Because it's so much and there's so many things outside of our control and I think we're all concerned because we're making effort as much as we can progress, but it's a the deadlines are important because certain things and triggers are built into the prior mandate.
Right. There was a legislative fix that was put in place as urgency legislation in June or July of this year, but it only extended the deadline to October fifteenth of this year. And that was not a deadline for the city to be complete. That was a deadline for the city and HCD to have certified. So October fifteenth is not a realistic deadline for San Marino right now, or probably something like a hundred and fifty cities in SCAG region. So I don't know if there are legislative efforts to extend that deadline yet again. I have not heard of any at this time.
Thank you. All right.
So do we have council concurrence that we would like it updated, reported at the earliest convenience?
Shorten our bayonets.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Huang, anything you'd like to say on a future agenda?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor Tom?
No, thank you.
Okay. And I just wanted to clarify, apparently I was not being clear in in my previous request for a future agenda item to some people. Based on a recent Public Safety Commission meeting, it would be for that body to facilitate a work group with school folks, the commission, residents and others to look at the school traffic and walking issues that are posing problems. So hopefully we can get that on the agenda to make that assignment to Public Safety Commission, since this has huge community interest at this time. Thank you.
Can I say something about that? There was a lot of work done by the community. It's somewhat outdated now, but I believe it was right before probably twenty sixteen or early twenty seventeen. I don't know if you were involved with the safe to school corridors. And I just hope that they can also, because that was a good report that was finished in part, that that could be brought to their attention. I don't know if they were involved at that time.
Thank you. I I see no reason why that can't be integrated to address that with along with some of the newer issues that have come up. Thank you. Do any council members have any special adjournments today? That is a good thing. Before I close this meeting, I would like to remind my colleagues that Ms. Quadras has a scroll that we have been requested to sign that needs to go out momentarily. If you could be so kind, I know Councilmember Udi has his signature on it. If the rest of us can join, that would be helpful. With that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.